Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council meeting for the morning of December the 7th. All of our council are present for this meeting. Item one on our agenda is to review the agenda we have for our Monday, December 11th meeting. So, council, let's please take a look at that document. Mr. Brady, is there anything on that agenda that staff would like to share with us before we start asking questions?
I don't have anything there.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, anything on the Monday, November or December 11th agenda that you have questions regarding?
Go ahead.
I have more of a comment. On 5A, I see that we have the City of Mesa Emergency Operations Plan. And I haven't read it all yet, but I was flipping through it and I was just very pleased to see that we had policies and procedures for all kinds of disasters beyond just emergency things, but, you know, for heat resilience and for social protests or some things that get out of hand and endanger our community. So, I see that it's an update that we've had this in place before. And so, I felt very good to have that and covering the whole spectrum of what could occur in our community. So, thank you for your work on that.
Yeah, and we, just mayor council, so you know, we at least annually do different exercises involve most of the city department heads and executives going through different scenarios of different disasters and trying to follow through and make sure we're all understand what's in the plan.
That's great. I think prior to the pandemic, we all kind of thought emergency plans were just something you put on the shelf and they weren't a real thing. But, I mean, look at Las Vegas yesterday. I mean, it's unfortunately a reality that we, it's not if, but when these things become a part of our lives. Mr. Freeman, did you have a question?
Well, I do. Thanks, mayor. On 4B about the helicopter upgrades, most of us have ridden the helicopters and listened to the staff about improving the E model to the F model. Is there a timeline on that? Does anybody have a timeline how long it takes to upgrade the helicopter?
We'll get back to you on that. How long it takes.
I know they're excited about the upgrades, having additional helicopter for service there. The other one I had was on 5C, and Eric has answered most of this, but the interchanges on US 60, maybe an update to council, why after all these years, we're taking over the jurisdiction of that? And you explained it very well, but council would probably like to hear that.
Good morning, mayor, council. Eric Darian with the Transportation Department. So, item 5C is we've been working with ADOT and ADOT has had a year-long project out on the US 60, first to diamond grind off the asphalt and smooth out the US 60. And then, the last part of their project was to, and they're just finishing up, is to come across all the interchanges and the bridges and to repave the asphalt that leads up to the concrete. We've been working with ADOT since I've been here to talk about turnback of sections of arterial roadway that they don't need anymore, that they acquired as part of their construction process. And so, this agreement will turn back sections of the crossing roadways back to Mesa. Right now, they typically have anywhere from 200 to 500 feet of additional roadway outside their fence line. We told them if they'd give it to us in a brand-new condition, that we would take it over up to the fence line of the US 60 and that it's just easier for us to delineate where our roadway ends and where ADOT's begins.
I mean, we'll take on the maintenance responsibility.
Yes.
They wanted us to do more, but we're okay with this much.
Okay. All right, thank you. I thought it was interesting how that's turned around after so many years.
Thank you. Counsel, other questions regarding Monday's agenda? All right. Hearing none. Next, item 2A on our agenda for this meeting is a presentation and update on the Transit Master Plan. Jody, good to have you with us.
Morning, mayor and council. I just don't know how to find that. There it is. I'm Jody Starell. I'm the Transit Services Director for the city. And we're just going to give you a quick update on where we are with the Transit Master Plan. Before I forget, before I begin, I'd like to just kind of remind everybody, when we met with you last year to talk about the plan, we talked about the plan being a productivity-based plan. And that is really because, for two reasons, but the primary one is Prop 479 is a productive, the bus assumptions in that measure are productivity-based. So, assuming it would pass in November, when it's on the ballot, we want to be prepared to be in a good position to maximize what funds might be available to the city through that. So, that's why we took a productivity-based approach to this plan. So, as we go through this, you'll see more of that theme through this, through the presentation.
Are you going to, I'm sorry, what's productivity-based mean?
Well, it means we're putting service out there where it's most used. So, we're looking at where the ridership is and looking at encouraging more ridership in that area. We've also looked at expanding service in other ways, but that will be, as we go through this and I show you the options, and as this is a blueprint for forward, there'll have to be decisions made on whether we seek regional funding for certain services or whether the city chooses at some point to fund these, fund a route out of the general fund. And those will have to be decisions that through the different budgeting years that councils will have to make.
But, Jody, what it means too, right, that to compete for the regional funds, which is typically how we've tried to fund most of our, right, is that there has to be kind of this comparison of demand.
Right.
So, is that across the region?
Right.
How it's looked at? So, it's not like it's allocated just by community, by population. It's, you have to demonstrate the demand for the service.
Correct. So, right now, in Prop 400, the communities get, we get what's called jurisdictional equity. And that's a proportion of the allocation for bus service based on our population. And then, we can apply those, that as we need across the service, across our services. The only restriction on that is really it has to cross, in order to qualify for regional funding, it has to serve more than one jurisdiction. So, it has to cross, in our case, into Tempe Chandler or Gilbert to qualify for regional funding. Going forward, they're going to look at routes, what's the productivity level? So, what's the ridership and how many miles of that route are you operating combined to look at how you would compare and compete for the regional dollars? Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you.
And just to again refresh, in this fiscal year, we have just over $29 million of our bus service is regionally funded. Or is, we have $29 million of bus service out there, about $25 million is regionally funded. So, it's a big part of what supports our service. So, at this point in the Transit Master Plan, we are into the implementation strategies of the plan. We've done, we've completed the public outreach. We had, we did some joint efforts with the general plan. We did some surveys on our own. We talked to some different groups on our own. We've got the goals and objectives. We've completed a needs assessment, all these things to get to where we are right now. Our vision, goals, and objectives, they combine very, they support very well the circulation mobility chapter of the general plan. We spent a lot of time with the general plan, vision and goals, and transportation, coordinating all of that. So, everything feeds together. So, we're not, we're not working in silos necessarily, but everything works in unity toward the final product. Our preliminary transit recommendations, and these are ones we're evaluating, fall into several different categories. Some are route modifications, some are service improvements, which would be increasing frequencies, some are new routes, there's some high-capacity transit elements, and then there's, we've identified some areas that would be emerging markets that might not be fit for a 40-foot bus necessarily, but might be candidates for a circulator or a microtransit program that could be evaluated down the road as we get there. So, this is, these are the routes that we're identifying for service improvements. And by that, we mean taking frequency to, trying to get frequency to 15 minutes. Right now, a 30-minute frequency is kind of the norm on most routes. There's some routes in Phoenix, because of higher ridership, they run more frequency. We have a few routes in Mesa that run on a 15-minute frequency, but overall, most of our routes run on a 30-minute frequency. And we really should be aiming toward a 15-minute frequency. It just makes that travel that much easier. And if you have to transfer, it can eat up a lot of time waiting for that transfer. That is discouraging. Then, we have the route modifications. So, you can see an example would be along baseline. Right now, that route goes to Country Club. We extended it to Country Club. We were proposing with Gilbert, and this is also in their Transit Master Plan, to extend it all the way down to Power Road. So, that's probably the last, well, that is the last east-west route corridor in Mesa that we don't have full service fully, at least out to Power Road. Our local, some new routes in emerging markets. So, the new routes are shown here in red that could be identified and will go on to further evaluation. And then, the boxes in the tan are areas that we've identified as emerging markets. So, those would be evaluated a little bit more for like, like I said, like a circulator or a microtransit option. And then, the high-capacity corridor options, obviously, we have, the green is shown as a streetcar, proposed streetcar extensions. And then, we are keeping the future, a future light rail extension on Main Street on there, even though it would be way down the road. We want to be able to identify that corridor now for possible extension. So, all of these recommendations, we're going to go through a two-part evaluation for ranking, if you will. So, we'll go through a need score on evaluating the socioeconomic elements of the area. And then, these routes, these improvements are being modeled, and then that will generate a productivity score. And then, that will be combined together to give them a rank, so we can kind of see a little bit more clearly where things go and how things, where we should invest our money along the process. So, our next steps is to come up with our recommendations for the near term, which would be from now until Prop 400 expires, and then 10 years after, and then 15 years after that. So, we'll go out and do some more public input on the final recommendations and come up with the final report. And then, that is kind of where we're at with this. We're just moving along.
You know, we just recently had an opportunity to visit about kind of what we're seeing as far as the ridership in both bus and light rail. Maybe just share briefly with council.
Sure.
Kind of ties into.
Yeah, so we're seeing, we're seeing ridership bounce back. It's coming back slowly after COVID. For the first quarter, I'm trying to, for the first quarter, our fixed route bus ridership was at about 900,000, which is about, I think it's about 5% more than it was the year before. So, the quarter before. So, we're seeing it come back. Light rail is coming back, about the same pace, just maybe slightly below. So, overall, I think between the two, we're having a 7% increase of transit ridership for the same, from the first quarter 2022 to 2023. So, that part of our ridership is bouncing back.
How's that compare pre-pandemic? Are we back to?
We're not back pre-pandemic. We're still, we're still down. We've seen, you know, the higher gas prices have helped that ridership come back. We always see when gas gets to be right around 375-ish, ridership starts to pick up. But, and that's what we're seeing. So, we expect that to kind of continue. But, ridership, the pandemic changed a lot of things. You know, people aren't, our express ridership, for example, has not, it's not bounced back at all. It's still, it's 80% down.
So, are you making these recommendations based on sort of, it's not going to be back to pre-pandemic? How do you forecast our ridership?
Slowly, because I think one of the challenges we have, especially with bus, is having a 30-minute frequency. That is not going to bring, that's not going to generate a new rider. Because if you have to, if you don't know, because there's unpredictability in knowing, did the bus come at 5 after 10, or is it coming at 20 after 10? So, you have to wait. And you could be waiting that 30 minutes. And then, if you have to transfer, you could be waiting another 30 minutes. So, if we can get our fixed route ridership up to 15, like 15 minutes, like light rail, it's a little bit more predictable. People know, okay, the most I'm going to have to wait is 15 minutes. And that kind of is in a reasonable timeframe for most people, but it makes it much more predictable in knowing how you go. So, our biggest thing with bringing riders back to the system is to make it a more predictable service, that they know where they can.
Yeah, reliability and frequency.
Yeah, exactly.
To.
Yeah, and Jody, also, you talked about what's changed since the pandemic. And here's the example I give and make sure you feel like we're on the right path, is the express bus, when we say express bus, that's really taking residents from Mesa and going straight down into town down Phoenix. Well, because a lot of people are not returning back to the office and there's a lot of office vacancies in downtown Phoenix, we're not seeing that. And we've had, we've cut back that services, those frequencies on those long ride hauls from Mesa into downtown Phoenix. However, our, the Buzz, the, what is the term?
Our circulator?
Our circulator, I don't know, I can't remember that name, does very well.
Yeah.
Which is in a tighter, smaller serving of neighborhood. So, we've kind of seen that change, right, where these long-haul rides into a downtown to a job center have dramatically changed, whereas the popularity of these kind of local circulators seems to grow. So, we're kind of having to fit, you know, fill through those kinds of changes and match these up to serve that area too.
Right, which really ties into the general plan.
Yeah, exactly.
Of having these travel shed, activity centers.
Right.
And denser, more active.
Well, and just to be able to connect.
And connecting people.
Connect you out to the bus and light rail system with these circulators too. It's kind of carrying that connectivity of different modes of transportation.
Do we only have one circulator right now?
No, we have two. We have the downtown Buzz that operates from just over here by Jimmy John's down to Riverview. And then, the Fiesta Buzz operates from Riverview down into the Fiesta District.
So, as far as prioritization, sorry, I have one more question. Prioritization, how are you, do you have, how are you going to prioritize increased ridership, so through reliability and frequency and adding new routes? So, how?
Well, that will become as part of the modeling. So, we'll see what the modeling shows as far as what that does with increased ridership. Because sometimes, because we've shown where we've added frequency, our ridership has increased significantly. When we, we have, we added frequency on Country Club probably eight years ago. And when we added that, our ridership jumped significantly by like probably, I don't want to give a number because it's so long ago, I might not remember, but it was, it was a significant increase. And that increase, we could track it to specifically between baseline and Main Street. So, feeding that, and so it's kind of feeding that light rail system as well, because we have that investment. When we added the Buzz, we added that route, we were a little worried that it might cannibalize some riders from the 96. What the Buzz has done instead is it's added about 7,000 riders a month to that general corridor. It's taken some from the 96, but it's added much more. So, there is a trade-off. So, that's why we do some of the modeling to see, because really up until this point, you know, we've used our best guesses and done some surveying, but this will be a little bit more technical analysis. And it will give us, this will give us a good starting point as if we have to, you know, look at the region, start negotiating with how, they're doing lots of studies to look into this, so that we know, well, we know this is what our study is telling us. So, we're not going in so blind into some of this stuff.
I have one more question. The emerging markets?
Mm-hmm.
What was the analysis on that?
Where we had interest in transit, but we didn't, but like I said, there was, through our outreach, there was interest in some of these areas. But, we look at those areas and they're not, it's not necessarily, like I said, fit for a 40-foot bus, but it would be interesting to put something out there to kind of grow that ridership. So, it might be something that's growing that we could put a circulator into that could connect to the regional system. Or do, because everything is going to be connecting into the regional system. Or doing a microtransit option in there that could help people connect. So, that would be, those emerging markets would need a little bit more research and outreach into the community to see which options might be more attractive to those residents.
Thank you.
Hey, Jody, how do you add the paratransit ride choice programming? Because that's a big chunk of our budget as well. I know it's not a fixed route that we have, but people are calling and getting rides through that piece, so.
Correct. So, paratransit is kind of a given. It has to, the federal regulations are it has to be within three-quarter miles of a bus route. So, we have that. We have funding in, we use most, a big chunk of our PTF funding, about $5 million a year to fund paratransit and part of ride choice. So, paratransit is funded in Prop 400. We don't, we haven't been paying out of our general fund for that, and we don't have to plan for that. Valley Metro plans for that as we do this. Ride Choice is a service we offer citywide. So, we, we're using Prop 400 for that. And that's a different, well, and then whatever overage that Prop 400 doesn't cover, we will cover out of our general fund. But, those don't factor into this as much because they are kind of standard required service, well, ride choices, but paratransit is a required service.
They just go along with.
We go, it just goes along with, right.
There's no like importance to highlight, because Mesa residents are taking ride choice and paratransit services to either connections or, you know, highlighting those pieces because there's, it's a substantial, especially our disabled community or folks that are not able to get to a bus stop are using ride choice or paratransit. So, I think it's important to highlight, but I don't know if this is the area you would highlight that piece. I know it's a given, but it's.
Well, as you would expand the system.
As we would expand the system, we would expand that service area. Yes.
So, just a comment.
Right, no.
Not sure how, if it's through this planning or another sort of planning, how that impacts our transit options, I guess, that we have here in the city.
So, what we do, what we could do is when we show, we have, I didn't put it in the presentation because it can get kind of messy, but we have a map that shows all the build-out system.
The graphics showing that outside of the three-quarter mile.
Right. So, when we do the build-out system, we would put the paratransit service area in there.
Yeah. And just a note, it became a lot easier now to ride either paratransit or ride choice than before because the Valley Metro made some changes internally to the connecting. It was separate as far as how you could request a ride. Now, it's internally connected where if it's a better option to use a ride choice, which is a little bit less costly than a paratransit ride, correct? You can get either or through the system that was developed now as far as the call-in center and all those changes.
Correct. Mayor, Vice Mayor. Valley Metro changed its operation for paratransit and ride choice prior to October 1st. If you wanted to use ride choice, you had to call one number. If you wanted to use paratransit, you had to call a different number. On October 1st, they changed, so it's one number. It's easy for everybody. And what that allows the Valley, the operators to do is if somebody calls in, they can educate them on ride choice and help them shift over to a more flexible program. And in Mesa, what we saw just in October numbers is ride choice is providing 63% of our accessible transit trips, which is a significant positive for us.
It's less money, but it provides more trips, potentially, for people.
Yes. Ride, paratransit is about $58, $53 to $58 a trip, and ride choice is about $28 a trip. And ride choice is a much more flexible option for our passengers, for our residents than paratransit.
It was brought to our attention that there's bus stops and shelters that maybe are in disrepair and not sufficient. And so, could you speak to that and your, how you guys maintain those and see where the need is?
We, well, I would, I don't believe our bus stops are in disrepair. We have a very strong lifecycle program that we evaluate our bus shelters every year. We have one person that manages all the bus stops for us. And we have a contractor that goes out and cleans the shelters. And our contractor is very, very quick to point out any issues that we have at our shelters, that if there's something that needs to be repaired or something not fixed. And so, we process through our lifecycle in doing that. One of the challenges where I think we have is we have bus stops that might just be the bus stop post in the ground. That's in city right-of-way, but because of the way it's platted, that land is maintained by the property owner. So, people assume that because there's a bus stop there or even a utility box, that that's the city not taking care of it when it's the property owner, that it's their responsibility.
Is that why there would maybe not be a shelter at some of those?
No, there's not a shelter. Most likely, in a lot of places, there's not a shelter because we don't have the right-of-way or we don't have the, we don't have the ridership to generate it. Like, we, and some of those places, like I talked about, where there's just the pole and it's the landowners, it might be next to a house. So, it's not necessarily putting a full-size shelter next to somebody's, the side of somebody's house is probably not the best option.
In general, I mean, I haven't driven around to all the bus stops in the city, but in general, would you say that there is a sufficient place for people to sit as they wait potentially for a half hour?
I think, you know, we can always do better. I know that there is some, some concern out there about some of the lean bars that we've installed. And those, those are really come out of a need for public safety. So, I think we can all agree that there's some intersections in the city that are more challenged with different kinds of activity than other intersections. So, those, when the option is to take, have a bench or no bench, we will lean toward having a lean bar because we feel that that's a good compromise and a better option than not having anywhere for anybody to sit. And those, and the lean bars that we use, they're, they're used in transit properties across the country. One of my, there's a gentleman who's an urban design consultant who did a lot of work urban design, on urban design projects for all the high-capacity transit projects in the valley, as well as like 100 projects, other projects across the country. And he's, he's used them very successfully in the right area. And that's, I think that's the key. We don't want them to be the standard, but when we have criminal activity in an area, if it's a bench or no bench, we'll try to compromise first with a lean bar.
Yeah, what Jody's talking, we coordinate with public safety. Sometimes benches are removed because of the frequency. But, Jody, let's talk about the council, three years ago, two, three years, we talked about shelter and creating more shelters and shade. We have, we are very aggressive on that. And I think sometimes those who weigh on this conversation don't give us the credit for the significant progress we've made in that area. Talk a little bit about the status of that.
So, we, we have just about under 800 shelters in this, 800 shelters in this, no, 800 bus stops in the city and about 350 shelters. We've made very aggressive attempts at adding shelters. Council gave us in a couple budgets we did ago, we did a shade study to identify where, what stops have shade that maybe would not need a shelter, but what stops don't have shade and need a shelter. And we've taken those results and we are, we've developed microshelters where we have, because we have some, we have some challenges in West Mesa with very narrow right-of-way, where we can't do a shelter, a full-size shelter. So, we are aggressively putting those out in new CIP projects. We have, we got $800,000, we received $800,000 from a Congressional Discretionary Fund for shelters that will match with another $400,000 for shelters. So, by the end of 2026, somewhere into 2027, by the time we get all these shelters in into the CIP projects, about 90% of our bus stops will have shade of some sort. So, we are being very aggressive in doing that. And the one. And the ones that don't have shade are probably, that 8% is probably, we might not be able to ever add shade to them just because of where they are. But we're, we're making strong steps forward in doing this.
So is the, I mean, is the thought with the benches, like they can't even leave the bench that has like the bar in the middle where you can't, you know, homeless person couldn't sleep on it or something, you know, you've seen those. I mean, is that, is that still problematic too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've experimented with a lot of different options in different places. And we try, we partner with PD to look at, you know, where, do we really need to take the bench out? Do we not need to take the bench out? If we really need to take it out, can we do a lean bar instead? And so we really have, David Callaway on my staff really works with the police department to really analyze if we really need to do something or not. And when we do, we try to compromise with the lean bar, and that seems to be okay for now. Because I agree, I think it's just a better option than not having anything at all.
Yeah, benches become kind of attractive nuisance sometimes for camping. We've had to remove bus benches in the downtown area just because of complaints that it, the only ones using it are those who are sleeping there overnight and using that for.
Is a lean bar just, could only one person use it at a time? I'm trying to picture like.
There's like, there's room for like.
Two or three or something, okay.
Or three people to lean against it, yeah.
Okay, so you feel like you have the sufficient money to keep up on these and to keep track of all of them and to make sure they're all being maintained and?
We, we do.
I probably shouldn't ask you that question in front of all your, you know, bosses.
No, at some point, at some point, we will probably need an extra staff person to help with just maintaining.
It seems crazy that one person's trying to keep up on 800 stops.
At some point, it's going to become.
When all the shelters get in and we have.
Yeah, as we get that, yeah.
Yeah, that would make sense, yeah.
Yeah, as, as it's just going to be more than, than one person can do to cover the whole city like that.
Okay, I just want to make sure we are doing a good job of maintaining what we have before we create more.
Yeah, we have a whole program of how we evaluate, and FTA has what they call state of good repair. So we have to meet, we have to turn in a report to the City of Phoenix every year on the state of repair of our facilities, our bus shelters, our transit centers, so that FTA is monitoring that as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Jody, I have a question for you. I just want to say thank you and kudos because I've watched the pre-manufactured shelters come in, taking the old ones out, then the truck rolls up, they just crane it off, set it down, bolt it down, and you're good to go with the, with all the capabilities of those shelters. And I know this is a long-term project, you know, having your restraints with your easements, your property lines, you know, we've chatted back and forth in some of District 1, some of the, you know, when it's hot out there, people want some sheltering and cover, and some of it's not available, but I know over time we're going to get there. So I appreciate all the hard work for everybody and looking at other options out there for other types of bus stops. I mean, you, the bus stop shelters that I saw were larger units being installed because you had the right-of-way and you could put them there. But is there any, are you looking forward to other types of sheltering that's out there on the market?
Yeah, so like this, I call them the silver bus stops that have the transit advertising panel on them. That's kind of a prefab that comes off. Our micro-shelters are, I'm kind of more excited about those because those can be, they can fit in a place where we don't have, we might not have quite enough ridership for a full-size shelter, but we have ridership to generate some kind of shelter. And then they can be, they're modular, so they can be expanded as ridership goes. So we're not creating a situation where we have a shelter, but, and I'm going to use Chris's favorite intersection of Southern Country Club on this one, where we have, where we don't have a shelter, but we have a lot of ridership. And you don't want to get into a situation where you have like a small shelter, but a lot of ridership and people can't get that shade. So with the modular system, we can add it as we need it, so we can grow it as, as it, as ridership grows.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Duff.
So on the bus stops, since we're here, is there anything we can do with trees and planting trees to provide some shade? They don't require a lot of space?
Yes, Mayor, we are looking into that. We are, we are working with the environmental group to identify, and we've identified stops through the shade study where a tree might be a better option. So we are looking at some of those options as well, because a tree is less expensive to do and less expensive to maintain.
And they're cool, I heard.
Yeah.
And, and there's, there's some places where that is, where it is justifiably a better option, so we are, are looking at that.
Yeah, and it gets us closer to our tree goal, too. Talking about the, the stops that we have, whether it's bus or tran, rail or whatever, those, those connections to it, you know, those last-mile connections, getting there whether walking or biking, do we look, do you work with transportation and looking at what the connections are and getting them to make sure that it's safe and has adequate?
That is, in the transportation master plan, I believe they have the first mile, last mile, looking at that. And that's really because a lot of that first mile, last mile coordination is, could be scooters, sidewalks, bikes type of things, so that we can coordinate where, where are those options, where that first mile, last mile connection is most, is, I don't know, is, maybe has a more priority because of the amount of people traveling to that stop. So yes, that is important to look at that and make sure that we are meeting that and connecting that, because there's a lot of people that, transit riders in general will walk about a quarter mile to, to get the bus stop, to get to the bus stop.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so, and I'm sure that's prioritized according to, you know, the higher ridership would be prioritized, making sure we have those connections that are, you know, safe and attractive and.
Correct.
And, okay. Then, we have these circulators, right? Do they work in, are they worked into like Google or whatever? I don't, I don't know, Valley Metro, do they do a coordinated app?
Right.
Where you could say this would be your best option to get from where you are to where you want to go?
Yes, Valley Metro has an app, and you can go on the app and put in where you're going and where you are and where you want to go, and it will show you the different options available. And it usually, I think it shows you like three different options, just like if you go into Google and search it, it gives you the driving, the walking, because I always get a little concerned when I do it. It shows me the walking one first, and I get a little panicky that it's going to take two hours to get somewhere. But they do like the walking, the connections thing, their app does that as well.
So our circulators are.
Our circulators are part of that. Yeah, so circulators are considered part of that system as well, so all of that. Our circulators, Tempe, Scottsdale's trolleys, all of that.
Excellent, thank you.
Jody, I, it was exciting to see these new and expanded bus routes, the red lines going to places that we haven't gone before, kind of east of Power, south of the 60. That's great, and all of those new and exciting red lines, those are contingent on the success of Prop 400 that we need to remember to start calling Prop 479. Is that correct?
That, that could be, yes, that could be correct. We can, we'll look at how those perform compared, like, we'll look at how that would perform compared to adding, extending baseline or adding frequency on University. So all of these things come together, because.
Within our own projects, Mayor, we'll rank them also, right?
Right.
Frequency versus.
I mean, just in terms of setting expectations, none of that's going to happen until that vote occurs.
Correct.
The whole bus system doesn't happen if we don't have.
Right, so this is all contingent.
Everything, everything we're talking about is contingent on.
Contingent on that, yes.
I just wanted to remind people of that, that this is not a given. This is assuming that we win this election in November of '24.
Correct.
Okay, and so we all ought to start, instead of saying, let's all start talking about Prop 479.
Yeah.
Because that campaign has started and we need to, to not act like it's a hypothetical thing anymore. It's, it's a reality. So, so those lines, again, those are exciting, but then we'll all, as you say, go back to this productivity-based approach, which is if we, if we launch these new and expanded lines and there's not ridership, then that will change. The buses will go where the people are.
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
I mean, yes, that would be correct.
And then when Jody talks about the modeling, so for example, even like before we do light rail, right, we'll look at the bus ridership and then we'll do BRT. So we kind of grow into these new emerging routes. We kind of use opportunities to kind of step into it.
Right, so part of it is looking at like, well, if we add service here, what does this do to the system? If we add, what does that, what does that ridership do to add into the system? If we do add frequency on this route, what does that do to add ridership to the system?
Ms. Spillsberry.
Just because I get asked this like weekly, and I guess I don't really know what the, I thought I knew what the answer is, but what is the like future plan for light rail expansion?
Right now.
Wow, that's a big question.
No, I know, because I get asked it all the time, and I'm like, as far as I know, there's no current plans.
The question within Prop 479.
What's in the plan?
Yeah.
If Prop 479 passes, what?
Right, well, what's, the, the high-capacity element was not in Prop 479. So right now, our folk, so there is no, in Prop 479, there is no light rail or streetcar extension.
Right.
So we are looking at, we are still looking at moving forward with streetcar. So our priority right, our priority right now has been to extend streetcar from Tempe down Rio Salado to Dobson. And then there's another extension in the regional plan that would extend from Dobson down to Southern and Southern to Alma School. Right now, we have no immediate plans in the, in our, anywhere to extend it further east on Main Street, but we keep that line on there as a long-term, so that when we're looking at planning, just planning options and stuff, we can see that that maybe do planning to accommodate a future high capacity.
It's a long-term planning perspective.
It's a long-term. But so it, it is there as even like long-term.
Yeah, I think the question you have to.
Ten years, 20 years.
I think from a community political standpoint, you'll often get that question as it relates to 479 because of continuation of the sales tax. And as it relates to the regional sales tax dollars.
Right.
There is no light rail funding or.
Or streetcar.
Streetcar. When we, when we say we still believe that streetcar can happen, it's not from the sales tax, it's from federal dollars that we think we could get.
Yes.
So sometimes when people are asking that question, because of the, the debate that took place to get Prop 479 through the legislature, I just want to be very careful because depending on what audience you're speaking to.
Exactly, because I get people that really want it and people that really don't want it, so.
So the answer, I mean, I don't know, help me, am I saying that right, Scott and Jody? I mean, I want to be careful how I be accurate, because we don't want to overrepresent, we don't want to take it for granted, think, oh yeah, streetcar's in here. Well, no, it's not been funded by the regional sales tax.
But it's part of the plan.
It's part of the, there's a plan.
Correct, and, and we're all, we're all, good morning, Mayor and Council, we're all speaking some nuances of this. The, the one correction that I would make, streetcar is part of Prop 479. What, what is not part of Prop 479 is the regional sales tax dollars going to fund streetcar. So the half-cent sales tax will not, will not fund high-capacity transit.
The regional plan includes streetcar.
But the regional plan.
The sales tax does not fund it.
So, and what the voters will vote on under Prop 479 is a, is a multimodal 20-year plan that incorporates regional sales tax dollars, federal funding, and other local funds to, to create, you know, what we have, of course, referred to as Prop 400, you know, in, in the past, but will now, will now be this new 20-year plan. So the idea is that federal funds would be used along with local funds to support the high-capacity extensions that are funded both in, in Phoenix and Mesa and Tempe under Prop 479. And, and that, that was a compromise that was made with the legislature to ensure that the half-cent sales tax that Maricopa County residents would presumably be paying if, if approved, would not go to fund those high-capacity transits.
So is, so streetcars, so as far as light rail goes, light rail's obviously not in with any of the tax stuff. Is it even in the plan?
Mayor and Councilmember Spillsberry, it is not in the plan for the City of Mesa. The City of Phoenix still has several routes that are included in the plan and that they're using a combination of federal and local Phoenix sales tax dollars to expand the light rail system within the City of Phoenix, but not, but not within the City of Mesa.
Let me clarify real quick, though. But when we come to council with, when you're going to vote on the transit master plan in the future, we will have a line.
Like on Slide 9.
Yeah.
It shows down to Power and then going south.
The long-term alignment, if you would, it's almost like thinking about how people look at freeways sometimes, expanding freeways, they'll put that dash line out there, someday that will happen, and that's kind of what we do locally is to identify that align, or that, where that would happen.
As a placeholder.
Yeah.
But there's no.
It won't be on a regional plan, but our local plans will show that.
And it would obviously be in the future as needed, population, ridership.
Funding might be available.
Once Bud Corn Bass is up and running and all the things, okay. Which a girl can drink.
Yeah.
Ms. Duff.
Along Prop 479, the funding does maintain the existing system as far as transit, as well as we know the roads and its expansions and all that.
Yeah, so, yeah.
But existing transit options, buses, light rail, whatever systems we have in place, right?
Right.
Well, and let's be clear, light rail, right, if horrible thing would happen if 479 didn't pass, but most of light rail is funded locally.
Okay.
Or federal, federal, local, right? It's not.
It's not dependent on the 479 dollars.
So that was all of the irony of the whole thing, is that if the legislature didn't approve Prop 479, light rail would be running.
Yeah, and Mayor, Councilmember Duff, I think, I think one of the things that has been discussed that, I mean, to your point, one of the agreements that we made as we negotiated out Prop 479 over the last five to six years has been this notion, as you said, that the existing bus network would, would remain, and that would continue to be funded as is by regional funding. And when Jody talks about a productivity-based system moving forward, Mesa was a huge advocate of that, and we appreciate the Vice Mayor's role in, in this discussions as well, because we really had a regional discussion about, you know, productivity-based sounds such like a good bureaucratic speak, but what it really means is putting our money where the ridership is. And what we saw were emerging communities, mainly in the West Valley, who were using the build-it-and-they-will-come philosophy of let's just put bus routes in areas where we hope that we'll have ridership or that we hope that we'll have density and, and have the region pay for that. And we, we didn't think that was a good use of taxpayer funds. We, we really felt that these, this money that was going to be dedicated to bus service should go where the ridership actually exists and where the ridership would, could utilize that, that funding. And so we were glad that MAG and Valley Metro ended up adopting that approach, and we do think our community in Tempe and Phoenix and Scottsdale and some others will, will benefit substantially from, from that type of approach. But to Jody's point, we still have a process that will go through if the voters approve Prop 479, where there'll be an evaluation that MAG and Valley Metro will do and then allocate the funding to those routes that show that they rank with productivity and ridership. And, and we, we believe that's, that's a good thing for the region.
So a 479, will it support an increase in bus routes? And we wanting to go from, to 15 minutes, right, instead of the 30 minutes?
Right, so I often describe like the, the bus assumptions that were in the regional plan, which is the basis for 479, as three layers. So the first layer is anything that is currently, that by 2019, that was currently funded or planned to be funded by Prop 400 will be, continue to be funded as a base layer in Prop 479. Then the next layer of funding is the productivity level. So there'll be, there'll be a pot of money from that that will, will be distributed to cities based on their productivity levels of that bus service, which is this part, part of the plan. Then the third layer is the emerging markets part. So there's some funding to help emerging markets, can it get going?
Prove up themselves.
True up that service, because it takes, when, with a new service route, it takes about three to four years to really generate the ridership where it kind of levels off. So it provides some money for the cities to, to at least seek, get into that, get, grow that ridership, and then the cities will have to make that decision. and then the cities will have to make that decision whether that route is productive enough that they want to use the formula grant money for, the productivity money for, or whether they want to fund it themselves, continue funding it themselves.
Okay.
So, you'll have that growth. So, that's why this is built kind of the way it is, is to kind of help Mesa be in line to be able to maximize those other pots of money.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And Mayor, Councilmember Duff, I, I think what we've encouraged too, to our regional partners, is to take the approach that Mesa has done. We have paid out of our general fund for many years to establish routes, to grow that ridership, to build up that justification for why they, why there's productivity along those routes. And then, as they've met regional requirements, we transitioned that funding over from the City General Fund to, to our allocations under Prop 400. And so, there, there's, there, there were some communities that really wanted the region to take that full risk. And, and we've, you know, we've talked to the point that Mesa taxpayers and, and the decisions that City Council have made have allowed us to take that risk to establish these routes over the years, build those up, and then transition them over once they've proven to be productive routes. And, and we, we've encouraged other cities to follow that model as well and, and put some of their own skin in the game to ensure that these are viable routes that are, that are worthy of regional funding. All right, thank you, and I know we have another agenda item relative to transportation right after this, so we could spend, between now and November, I'm sure we'll spend a lot of time talking about what's in 479 and what the, what the arguments are for or against it, so, thank you. Next item on our agenda, item 2B is a presentation and update on the transportation master plan. Thank you, Jody.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name's Eric Kaderian, once again, Assistant Transportation Director, and I have Mark Bente, who's a senior transportation engineer within this Transportation Department, and Sabina King, who's one of our supervising engineers. These two have spent, I'll say, hundreds of hours over the, the past year in the transportation master plan, and so, I wanted them to, to be able to, to present, and, and they, they know the, the plan really well. Much like Jody's presentation, this is, this is an update on the transportation master plan, where we're at. We've been working on the transportation master plan for about a year and are looking to finish up in the kind of February, March timeframe. Our horizon year, where we're looking, is the horizon year of 2050. And I think what's different about this transportation master plan than previous transportation master plans that the city of Mesa has done is the previous plans were focused on growth, growth, growth. And by 2050, you've heard this through the general plan, you know, we're, we're looking at being built out. I think our, our transportation network that we have envisioned in the past will be built out. So, where do we, where do we go from here, or what changes, what changes do we need to make? So, the transportation master plan for the Transportation Department is a, is a very important document. It's, it's the high-level guidance that, that really gives us what, what, what we need to, to move forward with a lot of the detailed plans that, that come out of our department. But before we get to the transportation master plan, there's, there are a lot of sources that, that kind of feed into it. I think it's been a great experience to work with the general plan and being, going at the same time as the general plan has really helped us with some of our land use assumptions as, as we look into modeling. We've done some extensive community feedback that Sabina will get into. Then we just have a bunch of other plans and documents that feed into the transportation master plan. Then, from the transportation master plan, that helps us develop specific projects as part of the CIP, you know, as we talk about bond packages. And also, we have, we have more work to do after the transportation master plan. That's really step one in, in, in some of the, the things that, that we want to do and, and we'll talk about. So, in this presentation, we're going to talk, we'll go over the, the community outreach that we've done and the feedback we've received. We'll talk a little bit about our goals and, and then the outcomes that we're still working on, but are going to be excited to share here in the very near, near future.
All right, again, I'm Sabina King, Mayor, Council. As Eric mentioned, we've spent significant time on engaging with our citizens and all you sitting here and various stakeholders throughout the valley to make sure that they understand what we're doing and also that we're seeking their input. And we started in spring of this year with Phase 1 outreach, which consisted of attending several City of Mesa events together with the general plan, also Transit, really let people know that this is coming and to make sure they know where to go to provide their input. We have online surveys, we had them fill out surveys at the event. We have, we use social media as well to let people know what we're doing. And we have a website together with the general plan and Transit. And also, we have this nice interactive map you see here, where people can provide comments in any different, in any area regarding traveling throughout the city, whether it's driving, walking, riding their bikes, also comments regarding safety and transit. And that map is still online, people can still go there. We have a website, tomorrowsmesa.com, that is also with the other plans. So, you will find information on there, and I highly recommend going on there, sharing it with constituents, neighbors, friends, family, anybody you can think of to continue to provide input as we move through this. So, during Phase 1, really the greatest transportation need that we've heard from our citizens was maintaining our existing infrastructure and also increased safety. During that Phase 1, we haven't gotten input, and you can go to the next slide. We haven't gotten input from all areas in the city, so we really focused on making sure that we cover everyone and we hear from as many people as we can, specifically East Mesa, Central Mesa, Southeast Mesa, where some areas that we needed to hear more from, and we've been able to achieve that during Phase 2. And what we did in Phase 2 over the summer, we went to the public workshops that were put on by the general plan. We were there in person, again, engaging with citizens, explaining what we're doing and getting input. We have over 350 services completed today, we have over 1,000 visitors to our website. And in addition to the workshops, we've also set up stakeholder focus groups, so we're specifically engaging with not just internal city department staff, but also various community organizations and our neighboring cities. And we're also going to have more focus group meetings, because we realized there's a need to, to continue to do the outreach, and we will do that next week. The other thing I wanted to mention is our Transportation Advisory Board, the Advisory Board to Council. We have presented to them five times at this point. We've been really dedicated on including them from the very beginning. And so, we've really made it a point to, to do that and also engage with them as much as we can. And most recently, we were there a couple of weeks ago, and we had them fill out a live survey during the meeting to kind of get a feel for where we're at. And a couple of things I want to highlight is the transportation investments that the board would most like to see. And it was almost tied between more sidewalks and bike lanes, as well as improved and enhanced safety for travel by vehicles. Two different things, two modes of transportation, or three essentially, but, you know, very interesting to hear. And one thing that stood out when we asked them where we have additional capacity on roadways, like Eric mentioned, we're going to be built out, right? We have some areas where we may not need all the infrastructure that was built. What do we do if we have additional lanes available that we could use for something else? And there was clearly a need or a desire to reuse those lanes for bicycles and pedestrians versus maintaining them for vehicles. That is what we heard from the Transportation Advisory Board, and we'll continue to engage with them as well. But again, please visit the website and share that with anybody you can think of, we'd love to hear from all of you. With that, I'll take it over to Mark, unless you have some questions on public outreach. Sorry.
So, I'm going to jump in here really quick.
I apologize.
But, these slides are very similar to the transit, transit master plan as far as coordination. There, there's been many meetings over, over, over this past year where we're making sure that the vision, goals, and action items in each of the plans and ultimately what feeds into the general plan are all consistent, they're all, they're all the same. And so, that, that's been a really, a, a, a big effort here this fall. Just really quickly, the, the transportation goals that we have that are going to be in the transportation master plan are, are these five? And these really come from the citizen engagement that we had, stakeholder comments that, that have been given to us, that, you know, we need to manage and maintain our existing infrastructure, safety first, I think. So, between this past transportation master plan that we did 10 years ago and now, there's been a really large shift in the, in what safety is. We used to look at all crashes and almost treated them the same. But now, really, there is, there is a focus on fatal, fatal crashes and the serious injury crashes. Those are going to be our areas of focus coming up over the next 10 years. Connections and choices, being able to provide, you know, multimodal options to people. I think that this is becoming more and more to the forefront. I know we've had conversations about this. Since we are looking out 20, 25 years, anticipate and adapt, there's, there's a lot of emerging technology that's out there, and I don't know what's going to stick and what's not. If you would have asked me 10 years ago if we'd have, you know, self-driving cars on the, on the roadway today, I probably would have told you yes, and, but they're not, they're, they're not here. I know, you know, Waymo's out there, but it, it's not, you can't buy that yet. But we're always trying to see what technologies are out there and what we need to do with our system so we can be able to tie into that. And then also, the Thrive and Prostberg Hall, I think, you know, we want to make sure economically we have a, a transportation system that can compete. But also, I think we've added the equity portion in, that we want to make sure that we're serving all portions of the city and how we need to.
Good morning.
I'm sorry, before we switch over and just going back to the transportation goals, is there, are you looking at, as we are building the density of our city, now that with the road networks are pretty much built out, and so, instead of growing out, we'll be growing up as far as our city and gaining more density in a lot of our areas. So, then it puts more emphasis on these multimodal, these micro-transit options in order to mitigate congestion, to have other options. And is there anything in our goals is to have X amount, X percent of the trips? I think, I don't know, I should have wrote it down. There's, like, as a resident, the majority of the trips that you make from your home are usually within three miles. That's again and again, like 90% or something. To have trips be into the, using other modes of transportation instead of your car. I've, we recently went to Burnaby as a visitor city, and I noticed in their 2050 plan, they had reduced fatalities to zero, increased public transit and active transportation to 75% of all trips. So, using active transportation, 75% of all trips, and reduce vehicle emissions by 100%. That's in their 2050 plan. Do we have any goals as far as being able to have a certain percentage or amount in active transportation? I don't know where we are now, and, and do we know? And do we have any goals to be able to start looking at creating those environments to increase active transportation?
Mayor and Councilmember Duff, I can touch on that. With the general plan, we kind of have three tiers in our goals and objectives. We have the, the goals you're seeing here, we have a vision statement, and then, under the goals are, are actions. We're not listing the actions here, there's, well, they're on the one slide before this. There are some in those action statements which tie in with the action statements in the general plan. We get more specific, like you're saying. I, I don't know them off the top of my head, but they're, you know, X percent people riding bikes, X reduction in crasset, crashes, things, things of that nature. So, we are trying to quantify these, these goals through our actions.
So, that wouldn't be in our vision, you're saying that would be in the breakdown of the plan?
Actual action statements that we can, so, that way, there are metrics that we can measure year by year. And it goes along with the, with the process of the general plan. So, every year, some, some of the metrics are yearly, some of them are every two years or every three years. And so, with those metrics, we can aim towards some of the, the goals like you're mentioning.
Have you established a vision for the transportation goal, the transportation plan?
Yeah.
So, I, I, the, the vision for the transportation master plan is to build and maintain an efficient transportation network. I mean, that's, that's the high-level vision, so, and then, as we go down.
That's not, so, yeah, okay, I'll let you get into this.
I mean, so you, you've changed the vision from the last plan, then? You, you're, you're changing it?
Slightly. Yeah, I mean, it ties into our Transportation Department.
Because the last vision said that you'll develop a transportation system that supports shorter trips, sustainable mode choices, high quality of life, economic development, and the creation of high-quality jobs. That's pretty specific compared to an efficient network.
Sure.
So, we're, we're not, this is not the vision going forward?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have the exact wording of the vision here in this presentation, but we'll get that to you.
That would be great, I think that's pretty important.
Okay.
And, and back to the metrics, I think that, that's absolutely important, too. In fact, it would be nice to get metrics from the previous plan, so we kind of know what we've done.
And, sorry.
Go ahead.
You can finish your question, or I.
Yeah, so, for instance, when the vision says that we develop a transportation system that supports shorter trips, did we, did we accomplish that? How, how far did we get, you know, with that? How, you know, how, what percentage were, were decreased of trips? That would be, do we have that information?
That's a good question, and, and I think that's why, one of the lessons we've learned is we had these, I'll call them more nebulous kind of goals, right? And we didn't have a good way of, of tracking them. And so, we've been working with our, our consultant to come up with these action items that we can track and that have, you know, some sort of metric tied to them, so that we can start tracking that better.
I think that's great, I think that's extremely important. I know, and I know, I don't think you were here, Eric, when this first plan was created, but it calls for some metrics, so, it calls for a complete streets performance review. Do we do that? Do we have that? I mean, so, I'm a little concerned about, and I don't mean to, we're, I'm veering off, but I'm a little concerned about the aspirational goals we set and the outcomes and the disconnect.
And I, I think we.
Between those two, and I.
So, someone who's been here all that time, this is how it happens, right? So, you have these large master plans that were developed 10 years ago. Then there were specific, I know we did a Southeast Mesa plan even after we did this plan that got into more detail and specifics. And then in 2020, so we talk about this transportation plan, it's like, well, then how does it get executed, right? Where does it happen? It does not happen in the streets budget. The streets budget is a maintenance budget. You know, the dollars that were, that are set aside for the collection of that sales tax are for street maintenance. So, it doesn't necessarily happen there. Where it happens is in the approval of the next transportation CIP, which is funded typically by bond, bonds and by the regional sales tax. So, in 2020, we did the Mesa Moves Initiative program. And so, that's, I mean, all these plans create the, the framework for then ultimately, we have to have, how do we execute that plan? And that's where the Mesa Moves was the execution, providing the funding for that. And so, we go, we went through this process again, and I see, if you look through that, those categories, I mean, it doesn't use the same words, because at this point, we're trying to go to the community and we're talking about what projects they want. So, we use things like, well, we talked about the arterials, we talked about the regional plan, and then we talk about the active transportation plan. That became what was the, you know, the non-vehicular pedestrian bicycle plan. So, that's what was adopted by council. So that's what was adopted by council. That was what was taken to the voters. So, even as we talk about the previous plan, that ultimately, in 2020, in the years before, the year before that, in 2016, when we did transportation, that's where those programs that the council then prioritized, and based on community input, based on the criteria of safety, congestion, multimodal, that's where the decisions were made about which projects. So when we say, well, did we do it or not? Well, that's what we did, right? And the decisions were made to fund or to, sorry, put those projects out for the voters to choose to fund with property tax. So, I don't know if that helps, but it's just, we can talk about these plans, but at the end of the day, the execution of these plans takes a funding, and it's typically through a transportation bond. And so, we can go back, and that process is a very specific process where we go out working with the council and the community, and we have those projects in front of us. So that's what's executed. So when we say, what did you do? What we did was, we got approval to take the Mesa Moves Program, and we're executing the Lee High Loop Trail, we're executing major arterials, developing new roads, Signal Butte, and Ellsworth, and other big projects around the city. So, I don't know if that helps, but that's, in my mind, from the city perspective, we have the big plans, but ultimately, at the end of the day, what has it, how do we execute those plans, comes from the decision by the council and ultimately by the voters to approve those projects for funding. So I don't know if that helps, but that's kind of how it all falls out.
Yeah, I get it. But this, the plan to me is a kind of a policy statement, right? It's how we approach transportation, and in the past plan, it was really complete streets, it seemed like, was the overarching policy.
Well, I think it was part of it, I wouldn't say it was the only part of it, because again, when we came back to council and to the community, the projects that got ranked the highest were completing projects that were needed to meet the growing population, again, Signal Butte, Ellsworth, Stapley at Southern, and Stapley, Southern and Stapley. So those were the projects that the council then decided were the priorities that were, yes, under this transportation plan, but those are the ones they committed the resources to complete.
Can I just jump in?
Yeah.
I think we have an opportunity, every time we slurry seal a road, to paint those lines differently. So if we wanted to have more room or to have a bike lane, that's just, you know, painting it, right? And reallocating the space for lanes and such. So, there's a little bit of a transformation that we can make where we want to, I think, in our maintenance, things in adding trees to make a better pedestrian environment. When we reconstruct roads like we're doing now, that's also an opportunity to look at, how do we integrate some of the complete street modes to allow more transportation and transit options? So, I think we don't have to, I appreciate, you know, these projects that we had in the Mesa Moves, and they're identified, and we're funding them through bonds, but through maintenance and new construction of roads, we have some other opportunities. And when we do those, if it's an area that we prioritize that needs help for active transportation, and we're going to slurry seal that area, let's relook at it and see what we can do, we'll see what those options are in order to provide increased transportation in that name.
So, Councilmember Duff, I appreciate that. I think as Mark gets into this next part of the presentation, I think the Transportation Master Plan and then ultimately what staff does afterwards will help identify that, that approach that you're talking about.
So, as Eric said, the plan is, we're, I'd say roughly a little bit over halfway through the actual document. And so, you know, just to answer the question of like, what is actually in the plan? We heard about public outreach, the goals and objectives, and the vision statement. That's in there. We have a pretty thick section on existing conditions, overview. What we're looking at here, this we would call the future conditions. And so, this is what's really left from our side and what the consultant working on. And so, going over this will be generally a high-level view, and we're working on that currently. Future conditions include the networks themselves, everything we've been talking about, all the different modes. It includes looking at the needs of the city, both overall, but we're also using a methodology looking at sub-areas, which we're calling travel sheds. And then finally, for this implementation, which I know is, you know, what we're talking about in this conversation, we're developing in the plan a set of design guidance techniques that we're calling street typologies. So, most traditional transportation plans have the networks. Back, you know, 20, 30 years ago, that would be the street network. More recently, the networks include all the modes, you know, bike, ped, transit, we'll take the results from the transit plan and bring it in. Kittleson, the consultant we're working, that's doing the work for us, they introduced this idea of complete networks or tiered networks. And what that is, is, you know, we're going to look at each individual network, but now we're going to look at them together and look at them in relationship to each other. For instance, in the transit conversation, there was the idea of the first and last mile. So we're going to look at the bike network in relationship to transit. We're going to look at our road network, roads and freeways in relationship to freight, you know, the needs of our freight corridors. And so, that's the new aspect of the complete networks. So, you know, Sabina was talking about how we went out with the general plan, we did a lot, we spent a lot of time in the community, we heard a lot from the community. And I think we all know that geographically, the city is large, it's very large. And I think we all know this inside, you know, we could say, oh, this part of the city is kind of like this, or this part of the city is like that. And we were, we came to realize through a lot of the public input and data that the city has these unique areas across it from a transportation needs perspective. And so, we came, working with Kittleson, we came up with this idea of travel sheds. They're defined both by physical geography as well as socioeconomic geography, which, you know, is all based on data that we've gotten from the region. In the final document, we'll have breakdowns for each of the travel sheds. Here for this presentation, you know, we just provided some over, you know, some basic bullet points, but you could see, you know, these are two kind of, probably our two most different areas in some ways, downtown Mesa and southeast Mesa. But we're trying to define what the overall characteristics are, what we heard from the public as feedback, and in those areas, what's unique for their transportation needs as we move forward with projects. The street typologies kind of tie it all together. A lot of transportation plans wouldn't move into this step, but I think it'll be really helpful in implementing, especially on the public work side, on the public projects. And this is taking the networks that we develop for the future. It's a streets-based approach, so we're going to look at the functional classification of the street we're talking about, arterial, collector, or local. And then, we bring in a component of the context of the street, and that's where we've been working quite a bit with the general plan and the planning group. And so, based on what that area is from the future land use and the network and the needs that we find in the travel sheds, for instance, we come up with ideas for how the street can be designed. This image kind of gives you a rough overview of how this process works. Up in the upper right-hand corner there, you see, that's the, I apologize for the images being kind of small, but that's the general plan's land uses. There's 11 categories in the general plan for land use. A lot of them are similar from a street context point of view, and we also wanted the document to be pretty efficient. And so, we kind of merge those down to the five you see on the left-hand side. It says example only because we're still working with planning on kind of developing names that, you know, kind of, when you read the name, you can kind of get a feel, a better feel for that context. And down in the lower right-hand corner, you can see how it looks when we combine these into the, into those five contexts. And kind of with what, you know, we've been talking about, what Eric mentioned, the nice thing about that is, we can now look at things almost in a corridor perspective if we're working on a public works project or even a large development project. And then finally, this is our, this is what the street typologies, this is a, so it says example only, so take these images with a grain of salt. This was developed, again, by Kittleson. These are to kind of give you a sense of what's going to be in there. We're going to work with them, much fine-tune these to be more Mesa-centric, and it'll include a range of ideas and concepts that we could use. A lot of it's going to be roadside, like what we're talking about, sidewalks, trees, bike lanes, you know, what kind of bike facilities, what kind of street facilities. And so, those will have street typology guidelines, this four-page approach you're seeing here for each street typology under each classification of street. And so, it'll be, it'll have a good amount of information, but as Eric was touching on, this is a planning document, I think we can use these on a lot of our public projects. On the development services side, it's not codified, so it would have to be, hey, this is a good idea, let's work together. One of our action steps, and I think probably the most important action step, which touches on a lot of the stuff we're talking about, is the idea of a true street design guide that covers, that takes these street typologies and puts them into a manual that's codified that we have as a standard that now can be used by us, that can, and we'd be working with development services to create the way that it could be applied to private development as well. And a lot of large cities now use these, they call them urban street design guides, and they are like this where they're broad enough to have flexibility in the design approach, but yet they give you, you know, based on the context, what you should be doing there. The last thing I'll just mention is, right now, this month, we're moving into creating the final document for the future conditions, just the raw future, basically the future networks. And over the next two months, we'll be finishing up a lot of the stuff we're talking about here, the travel sheds, the needs, the prioritization of concepts for high priority options, and the street typology development. And so, we're looking at, I think Eric mentioned it, finishing the project late February, early March, and you'll be seeing that at that time. And with that, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember, questions?
I have just one, you know, just in consideration, our Mesa Public Schools, our school districts, and part of our design in our streets, I've had parents reach out that there's congestion issues at schools that drop-off and pickup time, you know, those cars are coming out into arterial streets. So, I think collaboration with our school districts and our community would help, you know, what can we do better if a new school is being built, or what options do we have? I don't know. She chuckles because...
I think we need to go back 80 years and redo it.
It's charter to, I mean, they go up and down Power Road, and it's like, you know...
He's Mark Bolivar.
Yeah, it's just, unfortunately, sometimes they go in after...
I know. It's already...
Let's get on a planning of that, but yeah, no, it's...
So just a consideration as you're doing some of these planning things is, you know, what we're doing can affect, you know, if we narrow a street on arterial or something, well, how does that affect a school on there if we're doing that? And then providing walkability, multimodal type access to a school. Most people are driving today to drop their kids off at schools.
Because they don't feel safe being a person.
Well, it's about school choice. I mean, some...
It's where they put the schools, too. It's not...
And some of those schools have been longstanding in our community, and we're not going to resolve the issue, but I think that we need to be looking forward, part of our planning processes, we don't affect a school, and do we create drop-off and, you know, anyway, collaborate with our school districts.
Councilmember, I appreciate that. Yes, I mean, we have schools that are 40 and 50 years old and never envisioned the amount of cars. And then, our new schools, especially charter schools that are coming in, we make them do a fairly extensive traffic study to tell us how many cars are going to be coming, and the first thing that we tell them is, you need to be able to store all your cars on your site. Does it always happen that way? No, you know, things happen, but the newer schools have a lot more storage. I'd just like to point out, at Skyline High School this summer, we worked with, we worked with the school districts, and we actually changed the traffic flow patterns on the site. The school worked really hard to get things done on their site. We did some traffic signal upgrades, and it's been really successful. I think to improve, to improve traffic around the school, it takes us as a partner, it also takes the school district and the school itself to come to the table, too.
Yeah, I'd just like to jump out, yeah, you all did a great job working with the school. They pointed out some of the issues, but as you said, it took them, too. You know, they had to change some circulation on their end, which they, I think they were a little reluctant at first to do, but once they understood the limitations of what the city could do outside of their boundaries, then, and it's been very, I've talked to many of the parents that do drop-offs, and it's been successful, and they're very happy about it. So, I think sometimes, yeah, there's a little given to me.
Every school's a different situation.
It is, yeah, unfortunately.
Yeah. I think to, on Jen's point, though, if we can, if we can also focus on making it feel safer and more comfortable to get there other ways, you know, there's a lot of decision-making on parents, and that goes into allowing their kid to walk or bike to school or something. But if we, as a city, can make, you know, make it a little bit more comfortable and safe to get there on some of these streets, I think that would help.
Yeah, and Councilmember, go forth on that. You know, these guys are sick of me talking about the urban street design guide, but I really believe that can answer a lot of these questions. You know, we, it could have a section solely on schools. When a school comes in, it could talk about like, these are the better options, these are the goals, these are how we should look at designing the site and the site around the school. So, that's, I have a lot, a lot of hope in developing a decent street design guide.
I think that's fantastic. I think, I think it, will it be different from the one, the, do we have a current complete, urban streets, complete streets guide right now that the plan calls for?
All we, I'm sorry, excuse me. All we use now are our design standards, which have about five or six options for an arterial collector street. And so, this would, and you're seeing this more and more around the country where the larger cities, because they're having these questions, you know, there's, you can create a street that looks like this standard street, or I think more communities are asking these questions about what could go on the sides of the road, what could, how should the street be in relationship to the context and schools or large activity centers or transit? And so, a lot of, they're thick, meaty documents, but they're really helpful to answer a lot of the questions we're talking about.
I think Alicia loves the community documents.
No, not particularly. But I just, I guess I, I'm a little, you can probably, I've got a little bit of frustration because, and I, you know, I know there's some, there's some movement that happens away from a plan in general, but a plan, you know, our current plan calls for an urban complete streets design guide and performance measures, and review of the performance measures, you know? So I just want to ensure that what we put in our plan and the outcomes that happen and what we actually do supports and furthers the plan. So, that's my concern, and that would be my emphasis today and my point today. I think what you're talking about going in the plan sounds fantastic. I just want to make sure that what is in the plan actually gets done and the outcomes... and the outcomes are, are generated from the direction of the plan.
I appreciate Mr. Freeman bringing up the, the school congestion issue because it seems like driving around where congestion is generally, I mean, sure, there's, there's rush hour impacts, but generally when you're experiencing a problem, a lot of times it is tied to a school drop-off or pickup situation. And so I know to, to some extent, schools are exempt from city regulation. You know, the, the charter can plop up in the middle of a strip mall and they don't have to ask us for permission to do that. But I mean, to what extent do we have an opportunity to compel schools to give some thought to their traffic control?
Mary, I'll let you jump in if you want to, but I, I think there, really the, the control we have over schools and specifically charter schools is the public safety aspect. And part of that is, is traffic. So when, in a charter school does come in, we make sure, we, we have them do a study. They tell us how many students are going to be there and that, you know, we, we have good numbers now as far as how many, if you have 2,000 students, this is how much queuing space onsite you need. And so if you open up those site plans, you'll notice that their queues, queuing space usually goes around the perimeter of their school to try to meet that. Now, the first two weeks of school are always different because parents have to learn the plan and a new principal usually has to learn the plan. So we have great staff that they go out and, and meet we, with, with schools the first two weeks that they're in session to try to minimize as much, the traffic impacts as much as possible. But you're right, Mayor, we have schools where we never planned them to be yet. The corner of arterial to arterial streets, Signal Butte and Guadalupe is a perfect example of a location I don't think we ever envisioned having, you know, fifteen hundred to 2,000 students. I know, not to pick on you, but council member go forth has a new, new school coming into her, her district that's going to have over 2,000 students.
And there's very little we can do, I mean, they're not, they're exempt from zoning and they will remind you of that over and over again, especially the charter schools.
Are they also exempt from traffic and transportation?
To a point, right, I mean, how?
So we make them do improvements in front of their school. They need to build a traffic signal.
But boy, they, it's not easy.
Yeah.
Because it's like, well, you're costing us money. Listen, and we're talking about schools, but you remember, most of this plan will not be executed by the city of Mesa contractor. It'll be executed either by, it'll be executed by the private sector. A lot of these kind of, you know, developments, they're, we are adopting plans that we try to get them to adopt in. Those of you who have councils where, districts where there's a lot of growth, you know that, that's not easy. Even when we say this is the standard, it is a, is a hand-to-hand battle all the time, you know? So we will, these are great goals and we try to get there, but ultimately, we, it's, it's a, it's a negotiation and it's, you know, because a lot of times in your held development, this is where you need developers say, hey, the city of Mesa is horrible, it takes forever to get through the program and I can't get my permits, I can't get my approval. Well, part of a lot of that's what's happening is, the discussions with staff here are still ongoing about how are you going to address your traffic? How are you going to address yours, you know? And that does take time if they're not willing. So when you hear those questions or complaints, you should ask, well, what's your transportation plan look like? What is your, because that is, or a lot of this, this is not a, everybody signs up for this and says, this is, I'm, I'm willing, it sounds great for everybody else, but when I have to add more right-of-way for sidewalks and pullovers and D cell lanes, it's, it's not easy. It's not easy. And Mary, would you agree, Mary?
But do we have the authority to say to a school, wow, that, that's not going to work for us? You know, you're, you're creating a real traffic impact that we're going to need you to address?
Yes, to a degree, Mayor, and then it's always, you get to the finer points, right, Eric? I mean, it's not...
Yes, so I, I think in our standards, we, we do have the, you need to use these calculations and you need to be able to store this much traffic on your site. And if you can't do that, then the site doesn't work or you have too many students. And so we, we have that to a certain extent. Are the, I mean, but the schools that are coming in today are, they're not your neighborhood school that, I mean, my elementary school was 300 students, right? These, all, all these are 1,500-plus student schools that are coming in.
Well, and they're not neighborhood schools anymore.
They're not, yeah.
This, this is not for the neighborhood, this is for people coming from all over.
Right, they're on arterials, yeah. Okay, are there any additional discussion or questions? Thank you, we wish you well in this effort.
Thank you.
We'll see you again on the transportation master plan.
We appreciate, we appreciate the conversation.
Thank you. Next item, item three is to acknowledge receipt of board minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Ms. Billsbury and Ms. Duff. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, are there any opposed? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next is current events and conferences attended. I know we've all been busy, who would like to go first? Thank you, Julie.
Get this done, I gotta pull up my, okay. So I'm just going to jump in and people can add to the event if I mention it. Tuesday, we got to attend a really exciting groundbreaking for ISTV-12 out at ASU Polytech Campus. That was just a really great event and to hear what's going to happen at that building and I, I loved being a part of that. And then I also got to go tour the Polytech Campus after because I missed the one when most of the council members went last time. And that was just fascinating. And they were saying that Innovation Zone Campus out there, it's like 6,000 acres, like it will be the size of downtown Tempe's ASU campus. Did you know that? That's so much land out there.
Three hundred acres.
Three hundred acres, what did I just say? No, so six hundred, so sorry, six, I added a zero, 600 acres.
Their campus will be 300 acres in size.
But they have 600 acres of land.
So south, where, when they say the innovation district, so that's where the business park is going.
Right, but so with all of that...
That is, 300 acres, does that sound right? It's, it's, it's pretty, it could be, it could be that, down that area, yeah.
That's what they said, it's huge. Anyways, sorry, I shouldn't have...
You'll be seeing that agreement soon too. Just say a few acres.
12 million acres. And then on, I'm so good at throwing numbers out, I need to stop. So then I also got to attend the Mesa firefighter recruitment class with several of our council members and the mayor. And I just loved, I love going to those because I love listening to the mayor and Chief Kameli speak. But Chief Kameli read a letter from the director of Positivo Cristo. Sorry, I'm going to cry, I'm not going to cry. So she read a letter about, from the, from the director of Positivo Cristo talking about the compassion that our firefighters showed in trying to save a homeless man's life. And it was just so beautiful because she said they acted like he was the most important person in Mesa and it was just, it was such a beautiful moment. I just love the emphasis on compassion as they're training these new firefighters and what a difference that makes in our city. And then yesterday, I attended the Phoenix East Valley Partnership Forum that they had out in Tempe at the Para Club sponsored by SRP. And I had to bring it up because the guest speaker was a 12-year-old kid named Orion Jean and he started a kindness campaign, a nationwide kindness campaign. And he's done books, meals, toys. Keep it down over there, please. Anyways, I just loved it. He was such an incredibly, he was such an incredibly inspiring child and I just, I loved it because he talked about the difference that kindness can make in people's lives. Last night, I got to take my church youth group ice skating at our rink and so I wanted to bring that up because it was just such a beautiful night, fun event. We've got so many great parks and rec staff over there making things work. It was so crowded and it was just, I just loved being in downtown Mesa last night. And then tonight is Art in the Park at Jefferson Elementary. It's from 5:00 to 7:00. So they're going to do one of these at each park, or a park in every district. And so bring your family out there from 5:00 to 7:00 to create a piece of art that will be part of the new city hall building. There will also be live music and arts and crafts. I'll just stop there.
That's great, thank you, Julie. Who would like to go next?
So council member Duff and myself, shout out to the police department, Fiesta and Central Division. We were at Food City yesterday, Cafe con la Policía. Did good conversations with folks. I think meeting people where they're at is important, especially with our minority folks that kind of are more timid, I, I think, to reach out at, at times. So I, we had a good contingent of our, our victim service unit and then our, some of the police officers, officers in the beat around there. So great events, I think more of those are, are welcome as well.
Are you done?
Yeah, yeah, that works, I, I think that's it, yeah. While I'm talking, another shout out to tomorrow, last day to collect toys for our annual toy drive benefiting Banner Children's Hospital. It fills up the toy closets in each of the, of the sections of, of the hospital. So when a child goes through surgery, they are able to then pick out a toy throughout the year. So we, we were told that the, our, our toy drive fills up the closet up to seven to 10 months of that facility. So it really, I think, brightens up any kids that go through that hardship there at the hospital to pick up a toy. So Dobson Ranch Golf Course, if you're able to drop it off, if you do golf, they're offering some incentives. If you do bring a, a toy to play some rounds or hit some balls there at the driveway, much improved driveway there. And so if, if you have time today or tomorrow, drop off some toys for the toy drive. Thank you.
That's great. I was just wanted to tag on also on the, the police outreach, Cafe con la Policía. Okay, all right. Well, in West Mesa, we have a high Hispanic population and we were at a Food City, so the title was appropriate. But I've been attending these events with the Fiesta substation that kind of started this and Central's looking at doing it. I just want to encourage all the police substations to consider doing this. Going to a hub or a grocery store or a coffee place or something like that and just being there. I noticed in going there, the people will come in and they see the place there and the first thing is like, oh no, you know, what's going on here? Is there a, a public safety event, a problem? And they're just like, oh, and then they relax, they go in the store and they just kind of skirt it and then they come back around and then they have some questions. You know, it's, they're welcoming to, you know, have questions answered about their neighborhood, about things going on, how can I get help about this? It's very powerful. And I, I want to thank the police, community outreach and, and arranging this. I attended the other events that were mentioned and I wanted to mention tonight, we'll have a menorah lighting in front of the post, which is at 26 North McDonald at 6:30 tonight to kick off Hanukkah. Thank you.
Great, yes, that'll be, we did that last year, I think, for the first time and then this year, it's great, we're doing it in front of the post as part of the whole, you know, a lot of the, of their infrastructure that's there for the holiday celebrations. That'll be a great event.
I just wanted to say thank you to some of the staff that went to the Red Mountain Ranch Annual Meeting. That was much appreciated by them and me. We were there for a little while and they were there to answer questions and they had a great meeting and I, and I think they were very appreciative that staff was there in case they had questions about different city services. I also wanted to thank Nancy Salmon for a wonderful tour of EBIT that I went on on Tuesday. That's a fantastic facility, educating a lot of kids. In fact, near, she pointed out, they, they are educating nearly as many as the Polytechnic Campus, so about 5,800 students, so.
6,000.
Six, 6,000, yeah. So anyway, thank you to her for taking the time to do that.
That's great. Who else would like to share anything? I was at a lot of those events as well. On the ASU groundbreaking, I just want to underline that a little bit because this is, ASU's commitment to that campus is really exciting to see. And the building that we were there to, for the groundbreaking of is this $200 million advanced manufacturing college that ASU is launching that's the first of its kind in the United States. And it's really going to, I think, set up our region, our city. When we're recruiting new businesses to come to Mesa, we're going to talk about this business and this college a lot because it, again, workforce is, is a big challenge for a lot of these high-tech companies. And so it's, it's exciting that ASU is, is making that investment in our city. Also this week, we had a CEO luncheon where we had a lot of the, the larger manufacturing and employers in the city come and, and Mr. Brady spoke about water and discussed some of the, the two or three issues that, that are kind of top of mind for CEOs and, and large employers. We really value obviously small business in Mesa, but we also want to take care of the large employers as well. So appreciate our Economic Development Office spending some time on that. A week or so ago, I congratulated Mr. Freeman on being the chairman of the Public Safety Committee for the National League of Cities. And since that time, Ms. Billsbury has been named the vice chair of the, the fair, which is the Finance Administration and Intergovernmental Relations Committee. So congratulations, Julie, that's a feather in, in the cap of Mesa. We appreciate you representing us so well there. And then finally, I, I am fortunately going to be out of town next week when we celebrate the retirement of our deputy city manager, Natalie Lewis. And so I wanted to just take a moment to express my appreciation to Natalie. I know we all benefit from Natalie. She's kind of the jack of all, all trades at the city of Mesa. Whenever Mr. Brady has a problem, he turns to Natalie Lewis to solve it for him.
The one that nobody else wants.
Okay, the jail of all trades, thank you. And so, I mean, I, Natalie has really taken on a lot of, of the projects that, that I valued a lot in, in my time here, the, the Mesa K Ready Program and the homelessness response and, and plan. Our cultural arts, before I got here, the Pinal County Properties was a, a major, major project. So again, just anything that needed a special touch, that's what Natalie did. So Natalie, I won't be here next week to say thank you, but I, and I know I'm, I'm not unique in, in wanting to say this, but we do have a bouquet of flowers, if I can get it up. That's, that's kind of the mother of all bouquet of flowers. And so council, I don't, I don't want to, I mean, if you have anything you want to add to, to my thoughts on Natalie, please feel free to do that, but at the conclusion of that, Natalie would like to just...
And we'll, you'll have Tuesday too, so yeah.
That's right, yeah, there's going to be another project on Tuesday, but I'm not going to. So if, yes...
I'll add on, I just, and I know we're in a public forum and I want the public to know because I know the retirement event will be just with staff. And I just want the public to know, I'm going to try not to cry, I'm feeling like I'm a doonah Julie. You've been such a remarkable mentor, leader and example for women in our city government. And your work is seen through so many women that I see that are really doing great work and I know that you had your, you know, print on that. And personally, I will miss you. And you've always been there to turn to, to, you know, to lead, to, if I want to vent on something, if, you know, to, to share something or whatever. It's always been like this wonderful space that you provide in order just to be a human being. And I appreciate that and you lead heart forward and I will miss you.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mayor. Those are absolutely beautiful flowers. I will take them home, I'll treasure them and I'm so sorry, you won't be here next week. I will miss you at that, at that, that gathering. I just wanted to say thank you to the city council also publicly and to Chris Brady in particular. There is no more honorable, you know, career that somebody can have than to serve public and especially, and, and in a lot of cases for me, people who just need a little bit of extra help. And because I truly do believe when we help our citizens be successful, we're all successful. And so I have been so blessed to be here, Mesa. This has been an amazing community. And I, I don't live here, which has always been a sad thing for me, but I feel like this is my home. And, and ever since I came here, I, I felt that immediately. So I, I love Mesa, I will be cheerleading for you behind the scenes. I promise I won't come down to city council meetings and try to talk you into more homeless services. I can't call you. I can't call you. But, you know, the other thing that I have learned and I'll try to be quick, is that nothing happens by one individual. And we do that pretty brilliantly here in Mesa. And the very first thing that Chris and I did together as a special project was welcoming a new city council, which ended up being a new mayor and four new city council members. It was a huge turnover. And the thing that I learned during that time period was how important relationships are between the city council and the city staff. Because, you know, we can disagree, we can do all those things, but when we're not disagreeable and we're constructive and we work with each other the way that we do and have during my career here, you can do anything. And everything that has been going on here in Mesa is just proof product of that. And actually, I think council member Summers, you were part of that city council, you're part of that shift coming in.
I was part of two survivors.
You are, you are. So, thank you to every single one of you. Thank you to my past city council members and mayors and thank you to Mr. Brady for being the best boss I've ever had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate Natalie doing a little public service announcement for working in the public sector there, right? I mean, I think a lot of people, their success in life is measured, if you work in the private sector, by how much money you make. If you work in the public sector, your success is measured by how much good you do. And so, Natalie, you're a wealthy woman. You've accomplished a lot of good. All right, moving forward. Julie, thank you for doing this. Schedule of future meetings. Mr. Brady, what are we looking at?
Yes, thank you. And just before I say what the next future meeting, will you, anytime the council goes out and drives around the ASU Polytech Campus, you drive around that big loop, that Innovation Way, that was the City of Mesa. All that, the reason they're able to build these big buildings and do all these improvements is because Mesa had to go in and replace all the infrastructure from the Air Force left behind. So, sometimes that doesn't quite get mentioned. It's more about what are you going to do for me, what are you going to do about next year? But, you know, there's a lot of investment that went in there. Anyway, yeah, I know, but that's a big part of it. Okay, so, I know, this is exciting. Monday, December 11th, will be our final meeting of the year. So, we'll see you then and then we'll come back on Thursday, January 4th in the new year. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. That concludes our agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Mr. Summers. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, thank you. We are adjourned.